We have Rob Cates and Meredith Harrow and Heidi Morata. And I am John Goachy. And at this point, we have four. Let's see, we were all at the last meeting, right? So we're all eligible to vote. The next item on the agenda is minutes of prior meeting of August 20th, 2024.
Should be 2025.
What what?
Should be 2025, but yeah.
2025, yes, you're absolutely right. You think I'm a little nervous? Thoughts, ideas?
So we had a special board meeting.
There's also a special board meeting, yes.
And so I'll make a motion that the minutes be accepted as written with a special board meeting.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the special meeting, which is...
Second.
This is one meeting. Yeah, it's, there we go, it's right there.
I'm an alternate right now.
So minutes of a special board meeting of Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, at 5:00. All those in favor?
No, you need a second first.
Oh, you need a second, yes.
Which cannot be me because I'm an alternate right now. So let's raise you to a primary board member for voting because I cannot vote because I was not in the executive session. So I'd like to make a motion to raise Rob and Meredith to voting members for the executive board, or for the special board meeting minutes approval.
So the...
I am Heidi Morata making the first motion to approve raising Meredith and Rob as voting members on board minutes for the special meeting on Wednesday, August 20th, 2025.
So the first thing I have to do is raise Rob up.
So I think you have to raise Rob for the whole meeting because Ted is not here. And then I think you need to raise me just for voting on the minutes. And then for the next section as we go.
So move.
Because Rob and I are both alternates, so I think for the whole meeting, Rob has to be elevated. So Heidi just made that motion.
Okay, so...
Now you have to second it.
I will second the motion. All those in favor?
Heidi Morata, one.
And Goachy's two. Okay. And we need a motion to raise Rob up.
No, we just did Rob.
Just did Rob.
Okay.
So Rob, you need a motion to approve the minutes?
To approve the minutes for the special session.
Okay, so that's been done, so I get to second that.
Sure.
And now we get to vote on...
One.
Two, Rob and Goachy. Okay.
And Heidi abstained because she wasn't there. That's correct. And the minutes for the special board meeting Wednesday, August 20th, were approved.
Okay, and now for the regularly scheduled meeting.
I don't have any comments. I don't have any changes.
Okay. I make a motion that the minutes for the regularly scheduled planning board meeting of Wednesday, August 20th, 2025 are approved as written.
No, second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the minutes of the Wednesday, August 20th, 2025 meeting are approved.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Okay. And Rob and then me, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Heidi, approved.
Should we have voted on that?
Yes.
Yes, we did, okay, good, that's done. Am I nervous?
Yeah.
You're darned too. Correspondence received. We have a document from Goral Palmer And we also have a response from the applicant to Goral Palmer, is this true?
Back to the board.
Okay, and you've handed that out?
Yes. Yeah, it's been responded digitally to the record and then printed for your...
Would you mind reading that into the record, please?
What what?
Would you mind reading that into the record, please?
I think we should read the letter from Goral Palmer.
Just a little.
Okay, I'll read the letter from Goral Palmer.
Can we just repeat that?
I would, yeah, it's a pretty substantial, we're talking about the third-party review, okay. So what I might do is simply make reference to the title of the memorandum, who it was addressed to, the date and the subject matter, so that it's clear. And then indicate that this will become part of the record of the proceedings as it relates to the application that it is attached to.
And the response is even thicker.
So we should do the same thing for that, so we should say you just need to read this top part into the record and then the same thing for the letter that's attached from the...
Okay, so...
Basically, we just need to make clear what the documents that are being submitted are.
I think you're folding my hand.
Nope.
The Goral Palmer Engineering Review Memorandum to Joel Corey, Road Enforcement Officer from Will Haskell PE, Goral Palmer, dated 29th August, 2025. Subject: Major Subdivision Application Project, The Village at Timberline. Applicant: Timberline TH LLC. And this is a three-page document with nineteen different responses concerning the application for 25-225, is that it?
286.
286, yes. And in response to that, Mainland Development has the response to third-party review comments. "The Village at Timberline, Timberline Road, remain prepared by Mainland Development Consultants, PO Box Q, Little More Falls, Maine, dated 2nd September, 2025. Mainland Development Consultants prepared and submitted a package of materials and plans for the Village at Timberline project to the Town of Newry dated 20th August, 2025. The applicant received third-party engineering review comments from Goral Palmer dated 29th August, 2025. Third-party engineering review comments are shown in italics with the applicant responses in normal type set. Comments indicating no further review needed have been omitted." This is a rather lengthy document, and it also contains maps. This is available as part of the record. Is that the correct way to state that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would also just note, maybe read into the record, the fact that this document has been stamped by a professional licensed engineer, Mr. Richard Dutton PE.
Which document are we looking at?
The first letter.
The first one?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Is the other one?
No, the one you just read here.
The fourth.
Okay. Let me see if I can find that page. There we go. Okay, up to the fourth page of the response to third-party review comments is signed and stamped by Rick Dutton, Richard Dutton PE, who is sitting here in the audience.
I'll go by just about anything, please.
Okay.
Just point of order, if everyone can say their name for the tape recorder for the minutes before they speak, then that would help.
I'm Rob Cates, I'm a board member.
Rob Cates, who's been, who's a member of the planning board. I'm John Goachy, otherwise known as Goachy.
Meredith here. Heidi Morata.
Greg Braun.
There is a second letter attached to that, should he read that one as well? Stayed at August 22nd.
I don't know if I got a copy of that. If there isn't, it's additional correspondence, then you might as well just...
So there's a second letter?
Again, just enough to...
Yep.
Again, Greg Braun speaking.
Okay, there is a second letter. Resubmital of the Village at Timberline cover letter. The Village at Timberline.
Mr. Chairman, with the record showed, then I could return to the meeting.
Okay.
So probably I think you should just read the last application approval, which was the motion, and that this can go formally into the record.
Conclusion, application approval. Approval of conditions or deny. It has been moved that the board approved to this conditions of approval that these BAE typos be fixed in application of 2025 resubmitted and required directions. That was seconded, moved and seconded. Moved by Rob Cates, seconded by John Goachy, and voted in favor, motion passed. The new planning board adopts these findings of fact. Conclusions lodged hereby approved would be above conditions of the application. Close out.
Perfect.
Okay. Old business. In Oma Review of Timberline TH LLC, The Village at Timberline, Tech Land and Subdivision Application 2025-286 submitted by Rick Dutton, Mainland Development, 11 tow dwelling units.
So this is, wait one second, this is where I'm going to recuse myself and we're going to elevate the view to a board member.
Yes.
Do you have a vote?
No. So I can make a motion to elevate Meredith as a voting board member for case number 25-286, and I will recuse myself of the motion.
No, second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded by Meredith Harrow. Be elevated to full voting status. All those in favor?
One.
Two. That's Rick and Goachy. Okay, Rick. Dutton, it's your turn.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Rick Dutton, Mainland Development Consultants, representing TH LLC, Timberline TH LLC, excuse me. Normally, I'd introduce the gentleman next to me. I think to get it out of the way for the recorder, we'll have them introduce themselves so that the voice is identified on the recorder and then we can have that business done. So I'll look next to you.
My name is David Goldman, attorney for the applicants.
Okay.
John Morata, the applicant.
Okay.
Perfect. So we'd suggest and appreciate that the three of us potentially be able to speak if and when called upon on the issue and what's being discussed. I think that each one of us could bring a particular perspective given the situation. The next piece I'd like to do is just bring some clarity around the documents that you read into the record for correspondence, if that suits the board. So you have a big pile of paper in front of you and then a bit smaller pile. The big one is the original bound package. And the intent here was twofold. One, to clarify and capture the review from the previous meetings and submittals. So up until the remand meeting, this board had reviewed and requested revised submittals, in some cases, new submittals. And so we wanted that project record to be all encompassing and not start fresh essentially with the same questions and concerns from the first package. The second intent of the big package as in front of you is to update the plans and submittals based on the definition of road, which was the hang-up for the findings of fact the first time around on the board and the reason for the review. Back to you folks. And so the package represents a plan that no longer used the entrances to the projects as driveways, as a word, and looks at them as roads as suggested. And so what that's done is created a small redesigned site that I'll get into in a little bit more detail later on. I'll get to what's changed and what hasn't changed so that we can be on the same page on that. Now, the other piles of paper in front of you, they were initial comments from the CEO. There were a couple of typos called attention to and some discrepancies on filling out some of the forms, the Newry's UDRRO forms 10-1, 2, 3, and 4. So with the CEO's comments, there was the first letter back, and that's correspondence with the CEO, with a couple of revised forms. And that was the intent of that correspondence. The second piece, and they are all bound to one paper package, that's why you have two response letters, sort of back-to-back, and then combined submittals altogether. But the second was the comments from Goral Palmer in Mainland's response to those comments. And I'll get into that in a little bit more depth as well. So those are, or that is the information that Mainland has submitted for your review tonight. So in a little bit more depth, the plan that you see on this board is essentially the same in character as the previous plan that was presented. And that is that the net residential density and the number of units is the same at 11. The number of buildings is the same at 3. The plan provides access to the units with sufficient parking at 28 exterior spots and 11 spots in garages. And then also the 3 spaces that are required by deed for the previous owner. There's still reserved parking for Timberline LLC. That was in the first and the second, this recent note. There's still retaining walls between the buildings to deal with some of the change in grade. There's still a stormwater management, or there is still stormwater management on the site as well as upon. And there's still a reduction in peak runoff rates from pre-development to post-development. Now, some things have submitted, or excuse me, have changed. And so the summary of the changes to the plans is now there's one access road for development intersecting the less traveled town road at the existing entrance location. I'll point that out here quickly. On Timberline Road, one entrance to a road into the project. That was, I think, the crux of the hang-up for the first time around. There's no longer vehicle access to front and back of the units. In lieu, there are patios at the backs of the units. That's a design constraint. Essentially, there was not sufficient grade, or there was too much grade to access the rear of those units and meet all of the UDRRO road standards. Excuse me. There are now driveways to the garages rather than centralized parking areas. Essentially, we weren't sure if those combined parking areas might get interpreted as roads themselves because they did provide access to more than 2 units. And so with that lack of clarity with UDRRO, we switched to a concept where the driveways come directly off of the road and to the garages. Again, addressing one of the 4 findings of fact that was quoted as deficient in the first planning board finding. The stormwater pond has necessarily changed shape a little bit. You can tell it's a little bit longer and skinnier, and that's just to adapt to the space that regains in that area. And the phasing plan was eliminated in favor of constructing all in one shot. So those are the changes. It's basically still the plan you saw before. And in character, all of the things that we reviewed in previous meetings, such as the interstate fence to provide screening between neighbors and the bays. Those things are still in there. And, but we have taken both the appeals board's notes in the remand as well as the board's guidance in its finding of fact in the previous meeting. Go quickly, the third-party review comments resulted in a few additional tweets, and I wanted to hit on what those are. Because you see, you see, what, 3 pages of engineers' comments, which is what engineers are going to be doing. You know, we respond back and forth with long letters that don't use an economy of words. So it seems like a, you know, a big response package. But what that's amounted to is we've now shown underdrain outlet locations on the plans at the request of the third-party engineer or reviewer. There's been the addition of a sediment foray for the pond rather than a sediment collection swale, which is fine. There's been details provided for UDR drains. And that's essentially a drainage idea to make sure that the runoff gets to the stormwater pond. And there's been a note added that the retaining wall details, or I apologize, there've been retaining wall details coordinated, including a note requiring designed by a maine DE. So that note is now on the plan for the suggestion of the third-party reviewer. So those 4 items have been addressed in the last correspondence with the board in preparation for this meeting. So to sum it all up, so we can get into your review and your process, you know, when you submit materials, there's necessarily a lot of paper on them to be done to by that. It's significantly a board that you've seen already, mostly collected to try and be a singular project record that's the most up-to-date. And you'll be reviewing a slightly modified plan to remove the additional entrances to and from the project. That's what I've got for you guys. Do you have anything to add, Ken? This is David Goldman speaking. I'll just add as quickly as is humanly possible for a lawyer to speak, because what lawyers like to do is speak as well. You know, just broadly speaking, there were a hand, as Rick alluded to, there were only a handful of things from the original version of the application that were found to be a problem from the perspective of the planning board. We appealed that to the Board of Appeals and, you know, I had, we had our kind of lawyer arguments about what the coach we interpreted as meaning. But when this was remanded back, we decided to kind of take a step back and we said, it's all well and good. From my perspective, to argue about the meaning of words in the ordinance, we'd rather just get this thing done. And so instead of continuing to parse words, we tried to, as Rick alluded to, take to heart the things that the planning board was saying and just address them head-on. And that's what's been changed here, to try to just get past this whole issue entirely. It's relatively minor modifications, but we think it brings everything into compliance with what the planning board would have approved the first time around, and that will hopefully be true.
So the road to the parking lot that had been proposed to change from one-way to two-ways, what's the status of that at this point?
This lot, parking lot 3, that access road?
Yes.
That's still there, and it's planned to be there because it's Sunday River's access for that lot. And it's part of this property also by deed, those reciprocal deeds between Sunday River and Timberline TH LLC. But there's no access being utilized for this project from it.
And you're going to leave it as a one-way road?
We're going to leave it however Sunday River sees fit. It's not, it's no longer part of our site plan as far as the...
Okay.
Yeah, purview of this project. As I understood it, not to step on you, the problem last time that was perceived was that this project was making use of that to change the way in which it was used. And so that's what I mean by we just addressed it by we're no longer going to be making use of that access.
Okay. Rob?
Yeah, I have 2 big questions, and Rick will answer them all. So I'm actually pretty good with that. There is one thing that I did notice, I think this is too detailed, but we probably want to talk about. My understanding is there's currently on the property a wireless tower that is going to go away.
It's going to be, I'm John Morata, the applicant, it's going to be removed probably by Christmas. AT&amp;T's already been up there, and it's in the works for them to take it down.
We're probably going to make that addition somewhere, because obviously...
Wait, I don't want that there, it's in the way.
Well, I think I was reading this, I think it's non-conformal, right?
It was supposed to be a temporary tower that the previous owner had gotten that permit for. And then even the guy that came out to remove it from AT&amp;T, the representative, didn't understand that there was still a tower there, because it was supposed to be a temporary. But somehow it got overlooked, the town never followed up on it, made the previous owner get permits for it to keep it there. So then I inherited the property and found out there's no permit. So it's coming down anyways, it's in the way.
Right, I think we should just note that somewhere. I mean, it's pretty obvious because you're going to have to knock it down the building.
Right.
I think if I remember right, it's right in the...
The upper corner there.
I thought it was, was it in the upper corner, or was it, I thought it was over there.
It should be right in that corner.
So it's kind of, yeah, obvious, but I think we should...
Put so-called reception for that building, I guess.
I just think we should note it just because it is a non-conformal tower.
I agree.
Yeah.
Be part of the deal, because it's not going, we're probably going to get through this application well before, if I remember, there's a lease that expires before you can knock it down, is that what it's...
Well, no, yes, there is a lease, but they realize there's no permits for it, so they're already taking it out. It was only a temporary to see what the area warranted for a tower. The tower's not big enough. The tower's not big enough, and they're currently looking, or I don't know if they've found one yet, but regardless, they're taking that one down.
That was something I wrote down in the process, because it was non-conforming things. Need a couple other detailed questions first. So, a lot of details.
Wait. So the entrance is on Timberline at the existing location. And this little parking lot in the front here, that current exists?
Yes, there, there is some form of parking in, in that spot currently. It's, it's in a different shape and form than what we're showing here, but yes.
And that, that entrance is roughly where it exists today?
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's the deeded parking, which I thought, I think there was a D for that parking.
So the, the, the deeded parking spots are these three right here.
Got it.
So those are, those are for the previous owner of the property. This would be for ownership, new ownership of the property, reserved specifically for them and excluded from the use of, of the rest of the condominium members. And as such, we're, you know, this is a driveway and access to the parking versus, versus a road, meaning that it's not accessing welling units by that, by that definition. So we're just maintaining that existing entrance, maintaining the parking. There, there is currently, I haven't been up there and seen it today, so the, the real estate building is still there.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm talking currently. But there, there's currently a real estate building approximately there, and then there's, there's this entrance and parking for that real estate building.
So what provisions have you for turning the fire truck around?
Sure, that's a great question. We have a hammerhead to, to your, Nuri U D R O standards and dimensions in, in this end of the road.
Okay.
Sixty by sixty.
Okay.
I'll actually, I'll stay right here. Do you need to do the weather manual?
Okay, so this is a major subdivision. And does the planning board have jurisdiction?
I think if we were doing this, as we discussed, we're going basically to jump down to applications considered complete.
Attorney Greg Braun is attorney for the board here. Yes, there's been a previous finding that this application's been completed. Based on the changes in the description here, it sounds as though while there have been amendments and modification, it's generally in line with the original plan. You'll note, of course, that the majority of the finding of a complete application has a lot to do with standard and basic information related to the property, the owner, details about the geography of it, the boulders. Obviously, none of that's going to change. And so to the extent that it appears that this project is substantially the same even with the amendments, then you would still find this and believe this application be complete, and you would just move on to your performance standards and your, your criteria for approval.
Is that in line with the, the no-go method?
It is.
Okay, so we can, because we found that we had jurisdiction the first time, we assume we have jurisdiction.
That's correct, yeah. So you don't, the, the application isn't coming back here brand-new as though you've never seen it before, right? It's just, it's back here to be reconsidered fresh and new, right? And so, you know, as the Board of Appeals, you know, indicated to you, right? And so I'm going to read from their findings of fact on page five, paragraph two. The, it says, "The planning board may take additional evidence as needed and will decide anew whether the application meets the town ordinance standards. The applicant may submit revised project plans and any new evidence for this consideration. On remand, the planning board shall consider and make findings of fact and conclusions of law on all necessary standards under the U D R O."
Where were you again?
Board of Appeals.
Page five?
Yes, sir. And, and read from the Board of Appeals findings of fact and decision.
Paragraph two, you said?
Yes, sir. Maybe three, I mean, I guess there's a sentence at the top there.
Three, okay. Okay, so why do we have jurisdiction? So Heidi has, is a board member. She has conflict. And we should vote on that motion?
No, she's already refused herself.
Okay.
I would just like to state for the record, though, that I am an employee of Sunday River, which isn't a matter of this project. I have no bias then.
Okay. And... We've already collected escrow, right?
I believe so. My understanding is that applications fee and pay escrow has already been collected. I think there's a provision of somehow on that or something to deal with it. And I believe, and this is where I'm a little struggling now, there's one waiver requested, and I think that was already dealt with, if I remember it right, for the high-intensity soil map, if I remember it. But we've already approved the waiver.
Okay, point of order, if I can, I, I will tell you that you could, the board could not have come to a final vote decision on this had it not already made a determination that the application was complete and had it not already made a vote on those waivers.
Okay.
No.
So I think we're at site visit, which I think, I don't remember whether you went, but I know...
I did not.
Which you went.
I went.
I was not available at the time. My presumption is we don't have a site visit.
Okay.
But we should vote on that.
Okay, I... Make a proposal that a site visit will not be held for this project.
I'll second that.
Move and second it that a site visit will not be required for this project. All who's in favor?
One.
Two. Three. Rob Guchner.
Given we already had one.
What, what?
Given we already had one.
Given we already had one. Will public hearing be held for this? We already had a public hearing.
Right, but I think, as discussed, we should have another one.
So Greg Braun, attorney, point of order on that. So the, the ordinance requires that you have one public hearing on this application. You have already had that public hearing. I do not believe that you are required to have a second public hearing. It is not uncommon for a planning board where an application has substantial changes, significant enough that the general public or boulders might have some comments or opinion on those significant changes, to allow for the general public to come in and voice those opinions, express their concerns. However, that is a judgment call on the board's part. You're not obligated to do so. If I were to give you any guidance on making that decision, I might, you know, base it on the level of attendance tonight and the level of attendance or feedback that you have gotten from the general public as part of this process leading up to tonight.
We had a public hearing, it was well-attended. It wasn't as well-attended as the Board of Appeals. The location of the structures has been moved a bit. The entrance, one has not been moved, the other has been moved a bit, and the other one's eliminated. The layout of the parking lot, for lack of a better term, is changed. Would anybody like to comment upon whether these are minor changes or major changes?
If I were next door, I would say it's substantial, but I'm going to try and comment on it, but it's a tough one. Is there objections to have another public hearing to cover everything?
If I could speak, David Goldman. Yeah, I, I think that we don't think another public hearing is necessary. We think the changes are pretty minor in the grand scheme of things. It's the extent that the changes, you know, the changes in the entrances have made them less, I guess, impactful would be the way out of the term. Everything has been to make it to the extent you're going to judge it on the impact on the neighbors or not, less impactful on, on the surrounding uses. But overall, like, the changes are pretty minor. When you go through all the, you know, we start going through all the criteria, very little has really subsequently been changed. So, yeah, we, we just think, you know, this, I, I'm a lawyer, I understand things take forever to get done, but we're, we're just hoping to get this thing done. That was kind of what we were hoping in essentially taking what the planning board said previously and saying, okay, well, we'll just, we'll just do that, you know, what the planning board had asked us to do the first time around. And I do think, based on just the level of non-interest that, that we've seen, and when you weren't flooded, I assume, with emails and letters, and we're not surrounded by people who are particularly interested in the changes we made, it seems. So I think that does work in favor of, sort of subjectively, not being considered particularly major by the people who would be interested in it, especially given that it's, it's not for lack of people's knowledge about it from previous aspects of this plan.
Mr. Marotta?
Yeah, John Marotta, applicant, just want to kind of address what you said if you were a neighbor. I think the neighbors that do directly abut it in the back are going to be, this has been an improvement for them. There's no longer going to be a road back there, no longer going to be parking. So that's a, definitely in their favor, I would say, for the people who directly abut it. As far as the front goes, it's still parking lots like it was before. It's one entrance versus all the others we had, so the impact has gone way down from what I can see. And if, you know, from a neighbor's point of view, it's not like we try to add things that somebody would say, hey, wait a second. You know, they first went for this, we said, okay, they added things. We're actually taking away. So I just kind of feel that that's a step in the right direction.
Your patios will be stowed?
Yeah, yeah.
You have an opinion, I mean, I'm, I'm going to either way, public hearing.
I don't think we need it.
Meredith?
Same, I would say the very bottom, seeing the other interests.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that we do not need another public hearing.
I will second that. And it's been moved and seconded that we do not have a public hearing. All who's in favor?
One.
Two. Three. Rob Guchner. I believe we've already done the performance guarantee.
I think that was correct, right, so there's no, there's no change in the findings.
Okay.
Except for, I think you went from, if I remember, a phased plan to an all-always. A plumb actory, which you have a letter from the...
Any conditions of approval being placed upon this application? Rob, you suggested something about that tower.
Yes. So question of the process here. I, I'm actually the whole girl on the response and stuff. I don't know if we want to go through all the performance criteria and vote on it tonight.
No.
Given there's no chance to, to do that. But I think if we get through enough questions and summaries of everything so we can come back with something solid, that would be good. I, I thought the, maybe I'm just remembering this, but put a condition of approval, those might come out of the discussion of performance standards and criteria approval.
Okay.
Is that correct? Because I'm trying to, I mean, that tower was something I noticed on my own, just going through it.
Bob Skarlet?
I think we start going through the performance standards with the idea that we review the information that we presented to them. We'll do that as far as we can.
In light of, yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, but if it's, it's helpful for the board. We have submitted forms with a five-point-one and thirteen-point-one, I think, criteria of approval and performance standards review with the applicant's opinions on how those could potentially be met as a way of assisting the board. So as you go through those documents, you may find those in your packet. It should be in, so that's, that's a blank one, I think. That's, there, there was one submitted that had a proposed finding of fact filled in.
Oh, and it's in this one?
It, it should be, yeah.
Or is it in this one?
Oh, it's not in the, it's not in the big, big down package, now it's in the smaller one.
Okay.
I think I just sent that to Joelle for, for, for her to help the board here. But we can certainly, we can provide a paper copy for you if you'd like, and follow along with it on the digital, or we can simply give some opinions on these findings of fact and performance criteria as we go. I, I have paper copy here, I have only one, but I can hand it over after this.
Do so.
Mr. Chair, Attorney Braun, I also have a paper copy of the report we'd liked. We can provide these, and I can follow along electronically as well. These were in the package submitted by the applicant. They are part of the record, part of the materials that have been submitted to the board as part of the consideration of this application. And I do think if nothing else, it's just a good demonstrative aid to assist you in reviewing it and asking questions.
Yes, sir.
Is that the same as this?
You have two?
No, I have one, one of each. There's, there's fifteen, five one. There's 13, 51.
Okay, I've got one, but let's go. I've got the performance standards 13.1, but I do not have 5.1. Judge Judy, there you go. To drag, need to shine. Thank you. This is unusual, but what else is there?
Reminder for site condition, does that effectively be a CEO function? We basically defer that to the CEO of what he looks like on track, which is no way in the range to not present that it's open.
Correct. In light of all this new information that was submitted tonight, I would like to put this on hold until the next meeting, which
Can I kick out a few questions before we get there, which might give you the answers?
Sure.
So I'm having a fun time with archaeological sites as we were at the last meeting. And there is a letter from the State Historic Preservation Officer, which absolutely covers historic locations. What's the deal with that? Is that the same person for archaeological sites?
What's the person's name? The town or?
Don't remember, but I did, I did, it's a letter with a big seal dated in solid color.
Yeah, if it's helpful, again, Rick would mean that both prehistoric and historic sites are handled by that same office.
That's what I was figuring, but I just.
So if we were to get a letter back that said you need to do an archaeological study, it would also come from that.
It's listed up, this signature?
No, this one here.
Of that one?
Is it spice or speeze?
Something moni, moni or something? State Historic Preservation Officer, Historic Preservation Committee.
So essentially, the way they respond to us these days, they give us that, either that stamp for approval, or we get an Ask You Grand back that says we need to do X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, so I'm just asking that we do have two separate performance standards. But only one letter, which I'm assuming covers both, for my perspective, I just want to understand that.
My thought was that this whole site is pretty well disturbed by an excavator. Is anything there?
I agree, but the U D R O says.
Yeah, this is true. What was your other thought?
We talked about the parking these morning. I'm assuming that topsoil and vegetation removal is covered in the development plan. Part of the CEO.
Bob's, Rick?
Excuse me, you were referring to a specific performance standard?
Yes, it's F. F is a correct.
So, yeah, any topsoil removal is planned for reuse. In other words, that loan being repurposed as loan for landscape areas on the project. And additionally, you have erosion and sedimentation control plan provided to deal with errant soils. Otherwise, the civil site plans identify the areas that will be disturbed.
So here's a stupid question. So you have a new entrance sign going up, right? I remember on the plans, there was a note for a sign right there on the road.
There wasn't existing kiosk and sign that does not fit into this scheme and plan anymore. So that's been removed from the plan.
Okay, so there's no entrance sign on the Timberline?
Not as of yet. If something wants to be submitted later on, then it'd be submitted for the sign ordinance.
There's a sign ordinance, something about a new legacy sign, it's taken out, that's it.
Point of information, point of information, Mr. Chair, Greg Braun. Rob, when you were asking as related to those archaeological sites, are you talking about the performance standards that are just archaeological and historic?
Yep.
And whether or not there's a distinction between the two?
Correct.
Okay, so under the, under the U D R O, there is. Under the town ordinance, there is a distinction, just so that you're aware. As far as the performance standard for historical locations, that being V, it speaks specifically to whether or not there are any historic buildings or sites identified in the newer comprehensive plan, right? And so when you're looking at that performance standard, V, it's specific to the newer comprehensive plan and whether there's anything that this site and this project would impact if it's identified there. Under U, in the archaeological sites, that speaks to the National Registry of Historic Places, and it would be with the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. So that would be more in line with the kind of letter or the response that you're talking about and discussing. So there is a distinction there and between the two, just so that you're aware.
Okay, so it's interesting. So this letter really is addressing you, not we.
And then I think you would find effectively the answer to V in the complaint.
Well, it's interesting, because it's too old that it has to be in the C B O. I think we should really look at the top end of the plan, if I remember right. I mean, I, there's nothing.
You overlook the top ransom maps over there.
Yeah.
On your map there, C 31, could you put a dimension on the distance from the entrance to the intersection?
I'm going to draw with my finger what I think I heard you describe from the entrance to the intersection. Is that what we're talking about?
Hmm.
Is, you talking about this distance, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I can measure that for you here in this meeting, if you'd like. If it's a question or if it's something that's to be noted on the plan, then. Can you do this?
Yes, go.
From center line, center line intersection of the entrance to the project to Timberline, excuse me, center line, center line of the intersection to Steeway Road is 105 feet. And Mr. Chairman, would you like to have me hit that head on? It was noted in the first, or the initial review of the project, that distances between intersections for erosion would be minimum 300 feet. That said, there's no spot on this lot that's 300 feet from the existing intersection. So there would be no way to access the lot with that rationale. What the previous chairman had noted in his finding was that the applicant had an existing entrance on Timberline Road, and that was acknowledged. So that's, the assumption in this plan is that that existing entrance can be maintained.
I was noticing that, yeah, the distance of that lot on Timberline Road is like less than 300 feet.
Yeah. And there's, you know, there's no portion of the property that butts a road with an entrance, a potential entrance location that's less than 300 feet from an existing intersection.
Bob's Rob?
I need to redo that part of the video again. Off line.
Off line?
Yeah, off.
Yes.
The obvious is, say, you can't develop a lot.
Yeah, but it's always been developed.
Well, it's been developed for 40 years.
If I could just interject, I think that David Goldman speaking, just to put a kind of legal gloss on it, you know, there's an existing non-conforming entrance would be, I think, the way to look at it, and that this is not, we're not changing that. We're not making it more non-conforming, for sure. I think we're probably making it less non-conforming just in terms of the intensity of use. But that's, that's how you get to, that's how situations like this are dealt with. Written law, which kind of legally, it's not just existing non-conforming use. You're just not allowed to make it more non-conforming. So we couldn't move it closer to the intersection, but we're not. We're just leaving it where it is.
I believe you're correct.
That's always comforting to hear. I enjoy that as a lawyer.
Point of information, Greg Braun. And understand that I'm just kind of getting up speed with some of this application stuff and the properties of, if there is an existing non-conforming use or non-conforming structure or aspect of this property, and you're going to modify that, or this project plans to modify that, and that aspect of that is part of whatever the final vote or findings of fact are that come out of it, I would include that non-conformity and what effect this application has on that non-conformity in your final findings of fact, to wit, if this roadway is non-conforming, then I would include, let, you know, one way or the other, I would include what effect it has on that non-conformity. Does it increase it? Does it decrease it? Does it have no effect whatsoever? I just, I would speak to it, is all I would say, as part of your final decision.
The previous entrance to this lot is basically 200 feet of asphalt. And this entrance on Timberline. So it's proposed that the entrance on Timberline remain as it is. And the essentially 200 feet of asphalt on Steeway Road be reduced to, let's say, about 20 feet. Yeah, 20, 24, 24. Granted, that 24-foot entryway is very close to a one-way road to a parking lot, and also very close to a wagon wheel entry, wagon wheel intersection, for lack of a better term. Yes, Rick?
This may be helpful as well. I don't want to get us bogged down in details, but the 300-foot separation comes from the road standards. And what we're asking the board is to consider the entrance to the parking lot a road, since it's not accessing more than, or three or more dwellings. So there's no dwellings there. It's simply, simply an access drive to parking, which means it doesn't, it doesn't need the definition of road under the U D R O, and therefore doesn't need to have that 300-foot separation requirement.
Ooh. Some way to look at it.
And I, yeah, I don't mean to be legalistic about it, but it's the, it's the definition that the U D R O forces us into. It's kind of how we got here. So now we're, now we're saying, all right, if that's the interpretation of the U D R O, then that's, that's what we use in order to make sure that we're meeting.
And David Goldman is speaking on this.
You're right. It's, it's an entry to a parking lot which has no dwelling units. So therefore it is not a road?
That is correct under the U D R O definition. A road has to be something that accesses dwelling units.
Hmm.
And I was just going to throw in, as a real moral sense, the current state of it as I viewed it, it's kind of like an act free, almost free-for-all to enter that section. You know, it's not like it's a well-defined kind of entrance. So this, if we're using, even if we were used, if we were going to say this was a road, it's not under the U D R O, again, this would, I think, fall under the kind of non-conforming situation that is being substantially improved by what, by narrowing down where and how an entrance is made in that spot. But, yeah, I totally agree that under the U D R O definition, it's just not a road, so it doesn't, that doesn't apply.
Mr. Morata?
Yes, sir.
You have a question?
Nope, didn't raise my hand.
Oh, okay.
I was just, I'm just looking at this on my own. I agree with what they're saying. It's not, it's, it's, parking doesn't connect to the, to the dwellings.
It's parking for, not for the, not for the dwellings.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, as I'm remembering the county, such a block, question, idea, structure, whatever you wish to call it. Bob's Rob?
On the road or on something else?
All of the above.
Yeah, I don't have a lot more to say about the route.
And what's our lawyer have to say about the whole thing?
What specifically?
We have a, an entrance off a public road to a parking lot. And because there are no dwelling units, we cannot call it a road.
So it is not something that I'm prepared to answer now. It seems like the definition of a road or a way and how it, how we get to it under the U D R O is something that might be unique here compared to other municipalities. I'm happy to take a look at it and follow up with the board on how I think it might be interpreted or should be interpreted and defined, if you'd like me to. Is that what we're looking for?
Hopefully, I think it's still already non-conforming.
Sorry, I have more question. Is the entrance to, on Speedway Road in the same location as the main building?
So it's also, so it's also a non-conforming.
Yeah, but that, that's where I'm going with, we've got, both of these are non-conforming, but not changing.
Well, the entrance on Speedway is, right now is, I believe, it's like a little front.
It's not growing or getting closer.
Well, it was a restaurant, it was a free-for-all, cars coming and going.
Yeah, it was.
So I think it wants, it's not making it better because it's only one point of entry, rather than wherever you want.
The, the point I'm making is, it's already decided now.
So I guess we can't say it's in the same spot. If we just say it's not, not any closer to the intersection.
It's within, it's a subset.
Right, it's the same spot, it's narrower, right, than the existing same spot. But it's within the footprint of the same spot.
Okay. Also a non-conforming.
Or not even, if you view it a driveway. By, you know, the definition of road, public and private ways such as townways, public right-of-ways and private rights-of-ways other than driveways. We arrived at this whole thing from definition of driveway.
On the other hand, you just can't ignore it. Or can't look.
Well, they could probably say something about the fact that it's already non-conforming, and it's not, you know, new, non-conforming, it's been added to the situation.
We can do that.
Yes, Rick? I don't want to give in the way of a thought process, so if you're, if you're spooling up for another question, don't let me get in the way of that. But I, what I think I was seeing was, or maybe so independently looking at the performance standards to see if it generated any questions for you folks, so that's.
Yeah, I only have one word for the random performance standard question.
Go ahead.
Is there any, in, under, I'm under AP, but I was just saying here, home occupation. Was there anything under AP without home occupation? Or is it simply the direct to the resident who's in, they're running a business out of their home?
No, you can't do any of that. Yeah, there's no, there's no running businesses out of the units, working, I mean, people are working from home now, on their laptops, you can't stop that. But there's not going to be somebody running their hair salon, you know, people coming and going, getting haircuts.
I'm just asking, is that in the AP?
In the docs, yeah, you can't.
So it isn't, I, I just missed it.
Well, I can't say 100%, but I'm pretty sure it's in there. If it ain't, it'll be in there. I'd be shocked if it wasn't.
Point of information, the property and the residents there will still be subject to whatever the zoning restrictions and the use restrictions are for this, this property. And so, you know, whatever there is as far as allowances for home occupation there would be allowed absent whatever covenants or restrictions the condo association may place on it. I would imagine, without looking explicitly or specifically at the zoning ordinance for this parcel, that the kind of operation you're talking about would probably be prohibited anywhere on its face.
Yes. If I can make for this, this off-mix thing.
Rick, what percentage of this lot is covered with impermeable surfaces?
Yeah, I can say it's on one of the forms, I believe. Is it 10, 10-2?
I, I saw it for the buildings, but I didn't see it for asphalt.
Max impermeable coverage, 70% required, 48%. Okay.
So 48%. That's on C, C 2.1.
Impermeable coverage, 70% required.
Are you done, Rick? Amazing.
What's that?
I'm even on the right plan?
You found it faster than I did, so my hands off to you.
I'm not sure required is the correct word.
But that's all right, I understand it.
My point was, it's numbered as 48%.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions about the performance standards.
In light of this, these documents that have been presented to me tonight, that I have not had time to go through, I propose that we table this in the next meeting, which is supposed to be the 17th of this month. But you can't make the 17th, can you?
Yes.
Okay. Can you make the 24th? Can you make the 24th?
Check what, Mr.? I'm not sure.
Been unsure?
Is everyone else feeling like you don't have sufficient information and or time to move the information in regard to the standards and finding of fact?
I would like to review this, which I was presenting with tonight. And there's also something else I was presenting with tonight, which I can't find it now, but it is.
So Coral Palmer sent you a bunch of things, you responded to them all. Some of them are like, sure, we'll do that, so great, done. Some of them are saying, yeah, you don't, it's not really. And that's where I'm not meant to do that. So I am not sure where to go with that besides Coral Palmer saying, yeah, this is good, or no, we still have problems.
Probably not a bad idea.
Because they say we're going to, we're, the worst, I'm not going to second this either, you know.
She's nodding her head.
Yep, so have Coral Palmer and you.
You know, they said all the, all the points that they're saying, and Rick is saying, yeah, that, that's fine, we'll put it in the comments. So that's, that's going to be one of you, you know, get the, what this, what you need to do this to.
Yep.
Thoughts?
Well, it sounds like Greg Braun speaking, it sounds like you're wanting to make a motion to table and also to have Coral Palmer review and provide a analysis of the most recent response and submission by the applicant for, for the planning board's consideration of the litigant.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this application 25-286 and have Coral Palmer review the response to their study from Mainland David September 2nd.
And also have us a chance to review.
Yes.
I'll sign you back.
It's been moved in second that we table 25-286 until the next meeting, which
We have to do that next.
is not the 17th. It may be the 24th. But, Rick, Rob needs to review his schedule, and we need to review your schedule.
Well, can we do, look at a date next and just finish this motion first?
Oh, okay, okay. It's been moved in second that we table 25-286. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
Okay. Set the next meeting. The next meeting should be the 17th. Rob can't make it, you can make it, I can make it, but that's really not a whole lot of people.
If I understand what the appeals board says, they have some requirement, all three of us do it? If my understanding is correct, but if not, then you two are required.
I believe you're correct. Rob needs to look at his schedule. Meredith?
I can do the 24th or the first or another day.
You can.
The first is our actual official.
Yes.
First, first is right in the meeting.
Right. You want to do it this?
In fact, I'm not sure. I just wanted to question whether the Board of Appeals did in fact say it had to be three members. I guess my understanding was that it said that one member refused and then associate man, or a replacement member put on, but not necessarily that it had to be three. You, you can obviously proceed however you want, but I, I, that wasn't my understanding of the Board of Appeals.
I would be much more comfortable with three than with two.
And Greg Braun, point of information, I, I would agree with that assessment. I don't, I don't actually read the order to say that you need three board members to hear it. Again, only that the prior, or the, the planning board chair had to refuse himself and that you should raise a, an associate member to his position for the proceeding. But again, it's absolutely to your discretion and it makes sense, you know, if you feel that best practice to have all three of you available for the next meeting.
I'm fine if you guys want to do it, if it's appropriate.
I mean, but you can, you can say, what you, what you said to me, essentially, you're saying that most of this had already been looked at, and it's really just the new aspects that it said would be looked at. Now, if you, if you need time to look at it, that's, that's obviously in your discretion. I just want, want to be clear, it's not necessarily the whole occupation that needs to be looked at from the ground up. You're just, you handle things that have been changed post-Board of Appeals hearing.
So all the other points you've gone through, this is just now the stuff that you handled new tonight, you want to review. So it's not, it was not that I was for us to review tonight, other than that, either.
We have the information, so that's, that's good, we just have to.
Right, but you didn't have time to go through it because it wasn't right in the beginning, right?
Well, then there's this fact of here that we received tonight.
Right, we received the response to Coral Palmer's review tonight, so.
You got the question answered.
So we're looking at another month out, is that the date you come up with there, or did you come up with that?
Um, we're looking at the 24th at this point, which is three weeks.
I mean, you guys are, of course, you could do the 17th, it's two to the year.
I'm not comfortable with two people, but. Look, your schedule, and.
You, you have another, okay, Greg Braun, point of information, you have another regularly scheduled meeting on October 2nd, is that correct? Which is the difference, for the first, which is the difference of one week from the 24th. And I appreciate that everyone would like to get this over with and concluded. But, you know, if that is a regularly scheduled meeting and, and it appears that there's likely no conflicts and all three members can be available for that.
Right now, yeah, I expect to do it.
Thoughts, Barrett?
Yes, I can be here either the 24th or the first.
Okay, if we look at your schedule, and if we can make it on the 24th, we will arrange it on the 24th, and if not, we'll have to do it on the 1st. How's that sound?
That's fine, so you're like, do I know?
Yeah. I got a lot of time.
Okay. It.
Do both those dates work for you?
They, they work for me as well.
And you? Okay. Tentatively, the next meeting is for the 24th of September. And if we cannot make the 24th of September, we will make the 1st of October. Um, probably ought to make a motion on that.
Do you have to do a point of order to actually have the 17th meeting and then decide then formally, publicly that you're going to have the next meeting?
Run that by me again.
Like, do you have to still have the 17th meeting to say when you're going to have, if you're going to have it on the 24th?
Not sure what it would be, officially, the planning board has to meet once a month.
Well, I think we can move to PM's on the 17th, that's not a situation on other business that has been submitted to you, which you have not.
Joelle said we can move it to any other day, as long as we announce it here at the meeting. So. Do we have to do a motion on this? I make a motion, the meeting is, the next meeting is the 24th, if we can make it, if not, the 20, the 1st of October. It's been moved in second that we.
I guess, point of information too, this is being suggested, and I'm not advocating for any specific outcome, I understand, but intent, you could have this earlier in time, like depending on your preference, you know, and availability. You could do this before the 17th. I don't, you know, that may get tricky for people, the sooner in time you try to, to arrange it given calendars, but, you know, you, you could try to do it before the 17th, if that was easier to skip. I'm the same shaking head, so.
Does it work for you?
Maybe, but if you want to have people there.
I'm not, I'm out of time next week, so I apologize. So if you're talking about next week, I can do that, but I can do other days of the week.
I can.
Okay, so I think we're tied into the twenty-first, I mean, twenty-fourth or the first.
Okay. Uh, I made a motion that it's on the twenty-fourth or the first. I think second.
I do second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second, that the next meeting is the twenty-fourth of September. And if that doesn't work, it is the first of October. All those in favor?
One.
Two, three. Rob, Bruce and Barrett. I think we're done. Yes?
Is there something else for opening session or something?
Oh. Oh. Um, the CEO is not here, so we do not have any reports. Any open discussion? Or we all talk, go? Are you going to adjourn?
Sure, I think I'll actually do adjourn.
I'll second. It moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor? Two.
Three, at seven thirty-five P M.
It is seven.
It was seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five, seven thirty-six.